Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Board of Selectmen's February 6, 2020 meeting. As my fellow selectmen have reminded me, you have eight days to Valentine's Day.
February 14.
Eight days. So those of you who celebrate, there's still time. Kate and I, in honor of Valentine's Day today, are dressed appropriately.
We have a spouse that celebrates, baby Kate.
So the first item of business is citizens' comments. Do we have any citizens' comments this evening, Mr. Rapati? Any comments, citizens' comments?
Uh-oh.
Whatever you like.
Apparently not.
All right. There being none, we will move to item 1.1 on the agenda, and that is Mark Walter. And would you come forward to the table? And you're going to talk to us about the Harvest Ride for Respite 2020?
Yes.
Okay.
So thank you for your time and giving me the opportunity to come here for you. My name is Mark Walter. I'm a resident of Westwood, and I am working with the Michael Lisnow Rescue Center, which is based in Hopkinton, on the development of this inaugural Harvest Ride for Respite. It's a charity bike ride that will take place on Saturday, September 26th, and there are three ride distances: 27, 50, and 100 miles, and the 100-mile ride will come through Dover.
Okay.
So I'm here to ask for the selectmen's approval for that to take place. I have been in contact with the chief and shared with him the route, which hopefully you all have copies of, but I can certainly talk you through the 10 miles of roads essentially that will come through Dover. Should I?
You know, it might be good for the people listening.
Sure, absolutely.
You can just go through it quickly.
So the ride, as I mentioned, comes about 10 miles of Dover roads, in between about mile 57 and mile 74. So what's happening is it's coming in and then going out and coming in and going out. So it comes into Dover from Edfield along Pine Street, which is basically mile 57. Cyclists will continue on Pine Street, go right on Center, go up Walpole Street, and then make a left onto Poissy Street and ride into Westfield. Cyclists will re-enter Dover along Westfield Street.
Okay.
Turn right on Chestnut Street, ride into Needham. They will then re-enter Dover from Needham along Central Avenue, and turn right on Claybrook, right on Main Street, left on Dover Road, ride back into Natick. They will then come back into Dover along Glen Street, turn right on Farm, turn right on Bridge Street, and then ride into Sherborne.
Pretty ride.
Yes.
Right, right.
Very pretty. So that, of course, we are in the process of getting ready to launch this.
Okay.
Seeking all the approvals is, you know, part of the process, but once we do, course maps will be available, so anybody that, you know, didn't catch all of that that I just rattled off will certainly be available in the public domain. This is, as I mentioned, the first year for the event, and, you know, our expectations for this first-year event for the 100-mile ride is it may only be 25 to 75 riders, so nothing like the PMC, which comes through town. Certainly, I hope the numbers will be higher, and, you know, if that were the case, I'd certainly let the chief know if, you know, all of a sudden we were, you know, knocking it out of park, but I think this is a reasonable estimate. And the expectation, based on the start time, is these riders will be coming through between 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. So it's not a lot of riders. They'll be pretty spread out by the time they get there, so I don't think they'll be, may not even notice it.
Okay.
But nonetheless, again, I have been in touch with the chief of police, and as we get closer, we'll talk about where we may or may not want to put some police details just to control traffic, depending on what our numbers are looking like in that day. I should note, however, you know, the riders are told to obey the rules of the road, so even if there is no police, they can't go blowing through stop signs.
Right. Well, you know, we have Chief McGowan's approval on it. Are you riding, Mr. Jeffries?
I am not, but Mark is a, yet, you could still recruit me between now and then, but Mark is a seasoned veteran of our rides.
Okay.
Of the Time Trips.
Is this too long for you?
See what I have to say?
Yes, this is not.
Thank you for doing this.
So Mark, can you talk a little bit about the center?
Sure.
Let people know what it's all about and what it's for?
Yes. So the Michael Lisnow Respite Center is based in Hopkinton. They've been around for over 20 years, and essentially, it's a home that provides respite for families that have children with physical and emotional disabilities. So it really gives them an opportunity to get a weekend, you know, a night out at the movies or whatever by being able to leave their child there at the respite center, and they take great care of them. They keep, they take them out on trips. Some of them are, they work with some of the older kids on, you know, finding life skills and, you know, ways to, you know, be contributing members of society, and, you know, it's just, it's a pretty phenomenal work. Michael Lisnow, who was, is the son of Sharon Lisnow, who started it, they, there's, I forget, I'm just new working with them, so I don't have the full detail, but I know they're right up the street here in Sherborne, there's the Michael Lisnow Meditation Center, or at one of the schools, Meditation Garden. So they have a strong connection to the Dover-Sherborne area, because I think maybe that's where the Lisnows live.
Okay.
But anyway, Michael passed away many years ago, and Sharon, you know, moved over to establish this home, which has just, you know, provided a lot of great relief for a lot of families.
How did you get involved with it?
So I have, one of the members of the respite center has participated in some of my events, so I also, I own some multi-sport events, so I also put on triathlons and running events. My name may sound familiar, because I also organize the Poissy Farm Trail Run,
Oh, okay.
which we do twice a year, and you'll probably see my name soon, because I'm about to begin, initiate that approval process.
Okay.
But so, so Dan over at the respite center was familiar with me and my events, so he reached out to say, hey, we're thinking about putting on this ride. Would you be able to help? So that's what I'm doing.
Okay. So I have no further questions?
Perfect, thank you.
Do you?
No.
All right, so then I move to approve the Harvest Ride for Respite 2020 on September 26, 2020.
So Moon?
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very informative presentation, yeah. Good luck.
Thank you again, Mr. Rapati.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Would you like to come up, Mr. Rapati?
Right, right. It's not the hot seat.
It is the hot seat. We put, made sure it was a little electrified.
Hello, thank you.
Would you like to take?
Mr. Rapati.
Would you like to take your coat off and stay awhile?
Sure.
So the next, so this item of business is to discuss the order and assign the 2020 town meeting warrant?
Yeah, I, um...
Is that time already?
It's an officious warrant.
Right.
And I have a couple of concerns I just wanted to mention to you, so that you can start thinking about the ordering. One is, to what extent are some of these articles going to be controversial in that they'll involve a fair amount of debate?
Right.
And the reason that I would like to have some thought ahead of time with respect to that is, if it turns out that we're going to have to move to a second session, continue, have a continuance from our first town meeting to a subsequent town meeting, I'd like to be able to make that call fairly early in the evening. You may recall a couple of years ago, at the last minute, I reshuffled some of the warrant articles, so that I could make a determination earlier rather than later whether we would have to go to a second evening. Instead of reshuffling during the meeting, I thought if we could think about it now, and I recognize that it may take a few weeks for us to be able to assimilate all the information that we're going to need to make an informed decision. But, so that was concern number one. To what extent can we expect extended debate? Just eye-balling this, I was thinking maybe free cash and cash reserves may involve some extended debate. The Board of Health, Chapter 40U, may entail a significant amount of discussion as well.
And number 23 as well, the water use restriction by law.
Exactly. The Historical Commission Demolition Review, in the past, when that has been considered, there was a fairly significant amount of discussion. And then we have the citizens' petitions as well, which I think may also engender a fair amount of discussion.
So 32 and 33?
Right, 30, you're right, 32 and 33, with respect to the buses. So that was issue number one, just to start thinking about which of these do we think would involve the most discussion, and perhaps have them earlier in the meeting, so that we could then make a call about what we want to do for continuing the meeting to a subsequent date. And then, secondly, you know, it always is a concern about the ability to draw and keep younger families at the meeting because of childcare concerns. And I had a conversation yesterday with Carissa on the phone, and I suggested she contact you.
And she did, and that was an excellent suggestion, because I wasn't even thinking about that. So she said they were meeting this evening, and then she would get back to me.
Right. You know, I explained, I explained to her that my role is really to make sure that it's a fair proceeding and that nobody's blindsided by procedure. And I explained that I expected that they might want to have their articles considered earlier in the meeting, so that they could get back home and relieve the babysitters or the spouse who stayed home to take care of the children. But I also explained there's a motion for reconsideration that has often been used in the past, so that it's a difficult strategic decision for them in terms of their ability to have everybody they want at the meeting, and also to be able to ensure that whatever action is taken, one way or the other, is retained if there's a motion for reconsideration. So I suggested that she talk to Robin, and also that they think about what they wanted to do, so that when you're finally deciding on the ordering, you can take their desires into account in setting up the final warrant sequence of events.
Right.
So you notice how I was very nicely just handing this off to you?
I did hand her to you initially, because I said...
Right back at you.
Because...
Recognize that technique, Jim.
That's why you get paid the big bucks.
You know, Chris and I have spent a lot of time explaining the process to them, because, you know, we said to them that it's our responsibility to make sure that citizens understand what the process is.
Right.
And we suggested she reach out to you. We also suggested that there was a lot of, they needed to get, you know, out what they were trying to do.
Right.
So there was a lot of education that needed to take place.
Yeah.
And we mentioned a few times, the easiest thing was getting it on the warrant.
Yeah.
So I'm glad she, I'm glad she reached out, because we did say, you know, there's a lot of work. There are also nuances with us, because we, the board...
Right.
And the town, we really have no jurisdiction over school committee policy.
Right.
And this is a policy decision.
Yeah.
So we did explain that there could be a scenario where the town approves additional funding, but the school committee doesn't accept the funding, and then there's nothing that can be done. So we did, we've explained that to them numerous times, and we did encourage them to keep talking to the school committee to try and reach a mutually acceptable agreement.
That's good advice.
Right. You know, and I have talked to the school committee as well about, I've kept both sides, you know, abreast of what's going on, and I said they cannot take, you know, we're doing our job. It's not, this isn't a sign of whether or not we support what they're trying to do. What we support is allowing citizens to have their due process, so to speak.
Right.
But they, but they needed to understand that nothing might come of this. I mean, we just have no control over it.
Right. Okay.
How do you make that determination in the, in the context, as Madam Chairman just explained? We still need, we have a limited amount of time. We have a limit, we have a lot of, a lot of articles on the warrant.
Potentially, because some of these may come up.
They may come up.
Potentially. But the cost of having a second day is significant.
Oh, yeah.
The cost of doing all this twice is a burden, and as we have, we have explained as a board to the petitioners, quite possibly could be for nothing.
Right.
So we would be incurring a cost if this has to go to a second day. That may be a significant waste. So I would be mindful of that as, during the procedures, and I know that's hard for you to do, and hard in your capacity to be able to be sensitive to all of those things.
Yeah, I mean, I, as you know, we have limited proponents of articles, eight minutes, and I explain that to Carissa. I also explain we have a two-minute limit for comments from the floor, which, by the way, after the last town meeting, my neighbor told me she thought it was a terrible idea.
I thought it was a good idea, because people, because people just tend to repeat themselves.
Yeah, and I try to explain that, but I, but I think that, you know, we can expect a little bit of pushback, but we will adhere to that, because it's important to try to get people out on a reasonable hour. One of the questions that I also have for you is that, given that statutorily, this is primarily within the purview of the school committee, to what extent does the general budget approval for funding of the schools indirectly allow that to be a topic for town meeting? You know, generally, we would think that if it's not, if it's outside the purview of the town, then it's not appropriate for town meeting discussion. But in this case, and I am not an expert on the school, so I'm looking to you all and Nina for guidance about this. It seems to me that there is a town meeting, subject-mannered jurisdiction because of our approval of the general budget. And to the extent that additional buses, for example, would require additional expenditures on the part of the town, that it seems to me, therefore, it is an appropriate topic for discussion at town meeting. But I also wanted to mention that, because it is an issue on the radar screen, and I think that you all should think about it and consult with Nina about it. Chris, you may have already focused on this, though.
I'll let Chris talk, but prior to engaging them in conversation, we reached out to Nina to understand what our responsibility was as a town. And Chris can fill you in.
Yeah, council is opining that these two articles are permissible for town meeting, that they can make appropriation, but going back to the chairman's comments earlier, and if appropriation is made, it still requires an acceptance and vote by the school committee to actually expand. So there could be a scenario where money's set aside, it sits there for the whole year, school committee says, no, we're sticking with the plan, and it just rolls out to free cash the following year.
Do you fellows have any ideas which of these warrant articles are going to be the most controversial? Because in a perfect world, I would want them to come early rather than late, so that we can make a decision about...
I think if we took a vote, we'd probably all be wrong, but...
We have, this is a buffet.
I think, I think all the ones you highlighted are the correct ones.
Okay.
Although what about the hail reservation restriction? That could be, but it's going to be more informational, right?
The hail process is a, is a very low-dollar ask, and it's much more of a, at this point, an informational setting the table for what is most likely going to come in the future, but to get to the next step, this is something that needs to be done.
Okay.
So, but it is a very small dollar amount.
I could see, because I'm already have, people have reached out about the MGL Chapter 40U, that I, that is gonna be, I think there's gonna be a lot of discussion. And I personally think the water use restriction by law is going to also, there'll be a lot of discussion around that, and the school-aged parents, the start time is gonna be an issue. So I think all four of those are gonna solicit a lot of conversation. You know, so we, so we have talked about, and I know there was that special group you had put together to try and make town meeting move more smoothly, smoothly and be more efficient. Is there, can we take some of these, I don't even know if this is possible, but it's what we do with our agenda now, are, can we take some of these lesser, and bundle them into a consent agenda to try and speed? Because even though nobody's gonna be, have anything to say against these, it still takes time to go through the process.
Right. I mean, I was, yeah, I was looking at this, and with 35 articles, even if we spend just two minutes for an article announcing the subject matter, it's 70 minutes right there.
Right, right.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, Robin, and I wanted to talk to Chris about figuring out which of these we could bundle, you know, for example, the sick leave and some of the other, the sort of routine, small, I think they're important items, but they're, there are small appropriations. It's routinely passed at every town meeting. I was hoping that maybe we'd be able to bundle a series of these, and I know Nina had suggested that in the past as something that she's seen in other towns. So that would be one way that we could, to try to shorten the discussion, to the extent we can bundle as many of these as possible.
Sure, so you shrink the ones that are routine, and you allow more time for the ones that people...
Right, because that's, that's what we should be discussing at town meeting.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, I think we should definitely plan on doing that, and also plan on trying to figure out this, the sequence...
Right.
...of the controversial, potentially controversial articles.
Right. What's the drop-dead date for the sequence?
Next, our next meeting.
28, what is it?
The 28th, you'll sign the warrant.
Okay.
Because that, you know, if you could wait until after the open hearing, then you usually, that really gives you a sense, but we have, in the past, reordered things after the open hearing.
I mean, you can reorder if the moderator chooses day of.
And I'll do, you know, if you all think that's prudent, I'm happy to do that. We have done it in the past.
I mean, we can try and guess now, and if we're wrong, then we can...
Maybe it makes sense to see if we can bundle, get that thing sort of teed up, and then we can, between now and the 28th, take our own sort of guesses at what might be. But again, I think that, Jim, I think you hit it on the head.
I think you identified all of them, right.
It's gonna be an interesting meeting. And just one other thought, you know, with respect to the citizens' petitions, I think that, given that it is a citizen petition, we should try to be more, you know, as accommodating as possible for what would be helpful to them.
Right, which is, you know, which is why we've really, you know, we've explained the process, we've explained the pros and cons to what they're trying to do. We, you know, we had to have them amend some of the articles, because the traffic study, they wanted to do some things that they couldn't do, but we told them that they had a lot of work that they needed to do. And the example we gave them was the first time the plastic bags didn't pass, because, you know, procedures weren't followed. So we're telling you these things, because we want you to know what has to happen.
Yeah, I think you've done very well. And, and I think they, you know, from my conversation with them last night, they seemed very well informed, so.
Very good.
I think you did a great job.
If I could just add, Madam Chair...
You can always just say it.
As it relates to the conversation.
What did I screw up now?
No, nothing at all. I just wanted to make mention that nothing is, there have been no official votes that I'm aware of, but I have heard that both 22, so that 22 may be withdrawn.
Okay.
But again, I just, you know, I got no official votes by the sponsor, but that is, that is what I've heard, that that may be withdrawn. And secondly, Article 23, as it relates to water use restriction by law, two things there. I was notified this afternoon by, by the proponent, the chair, that they are looking to the Board of Selectmen to make a determination on whether or not the Board wants them forward, recommend moving forward with this article, so the Board could discuss and vote on that this evening, or we can continue the dialogue to the next meeting.
I'm not sure. I'm in a position...
Yeah, I'd have to look at, I'd have to actually look, and I don't think there's anything in place, other than a concept of a water use restriction by law, based on the commentary we heard from Colonial Water a few months back about water usage during the summertime. Yeah, that requires a fair amount of discussion, because my understanding was with, the way the information was presented at that meeting, I mean, the thing spikes in the summertime from people watering their lawn. I'm not quite sure what, and they were at a loss to explain what they could do about it.
Well, that was a big question, how, so you have, right, what's enforcement?
Yeah, and so I don't know how that gets resolved. And I don't know what's in here, so I need to understand that, sure.
So that may be, you know, more education, and that may be a reason to table it for this town meeting.
Yeah, because I also thought that the water usage overall, if you just did the whole year, was okay.
It flattens on.
Yeah. So I'm not, you know, so that's what I walked away with, and I thought this was premature.
Chris, in that regard, also Article 22, if I remember correctly, there was a question last time about whether Chapter 40U was a source of authority for the action that was being requested.
Oh, I remember that, right.
And so I think, again, this goes to whether it's within the purview of town meeting, because it would, it would not be helpful for us to approve a bylaw that's struck down by the Attorney General's office. It would, it's a waste of time, frankly. So maybe if we could consult with town council about whether 40U, in fact, authorizes the action that's being requested, that would be helpful.
I, yes, sir, I'm meeting with council on Monday about all things generally warrant, and this is an article of a topic of discussion.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And Jim, maybe I'll, you know, maybe you and I can get together the next week or so, you know, there are consolidation opportunities, but to kind of...
That'd be wonderful.
Put something together and then come back the next time.
Super, thank you. You know, the other thing, Chris, that I'm a little bit nervous about, is that if it turns out that it is outside the scope of the authority of 40U, then technically, it's an altriviree's motion, and I'll have to face a decision about whether I rule it out of order or not at the meeting. So I just, it would be very helpful if we have the opinion of council.
Okay.
Good.
And feel free to, I'll reach out to you, but you could join me on Monday, too, if you'd like.
I'll have to check my calendar. I might be out of town, but, you know, that'd be great. Thank you.
That's another excuse I often use.
Feel like the phantom traveler.
Ah, exactly.
Well...
I'm glad we were having this, this discussion now, early, so.
Yeah, and thank you, thank you for listening, and also thank you for all the work you do. It's a tough job.
It's right back at you, all the work you do, so.
My job is easy compared to...
That's why John gets the big bucks.
My first town meeting, when the, when I was reading the budget lines, and I got to moderator, and I said zero, and then I told the town, you get what you pay for.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Still stand.
It's a great line.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll see you now.
Well done.
Bye-bye.
Two other points, Madam Chair, if I may, just as it relates to the warrant. So one, in your packet, is some supplemental information related to some of the new articles that you see this year, senior tax release, relief, excuse me, the cemetery commission by law changes. So there's some supplemental information in there that'll continually serve as we receive it.
Okay.
The other that you should be aware is that we're working to schedule many of these articles to be presented to the Board in the coming weeks. many of these, um, articles to be presented to the board in the coming weeks. So at our next meeting, there'll be a presentation from members of the Hail Task Force who want to come and present their, their recommendation.
Oh, okay, that's, that's great, okay.
Also on the twenty-seventh will be, uh, I'll provide you with a budget update that will cover many of the financially related articles that you see here. Um, in addition, um, the solar articles, as we continue that effort, and if and when we get to a point, we'll come back before the board with an update on where we've been. And, uh, the schools, the citizen petitions, the petitioner will also be coming before the board at some point. We're just working on a schedule with the petitioner. Um, so you'll have an opportunity to hear from many of the petitioners as well as some background information on these pretty early on.
I think that's great. Now, in the budget presentation, will it be all encompassing? So will it have everything that we know of today?
It will, it will be everything that we know of today, yes.
Will we put placeholders in for things we don't know and kind of guesstimate those?
I'll, I'll, I will identify those, but I have received all, I've received all departmental budgets, including non-depart- uh, non-board selectmen departments. Um, so unless anything has changed since they've been submitted, it reflects what we're looking at.
Now, when do we get the final healthcare rates, Jerry?
Uh, we're due to set the rates, and the February twenty-ninth...
Okay, so we'll be after that, all right.
And I can highlight, and we all have an assessment slide that lets you know what assessments we've actually received and what we're still waiting on with the, um, with the estimate.
Yeah, that would be helpful, okay. Is that late, or is it usually the end of February?
Yeah, it's about on, on standard.
Okay.
They've gone into March, so.
Okay, because for some reason I had in my mind the middle of February. Must be all this Valentine's Day conversation. All right, that will be really helpful. Completed one point three?
Yes.
No, one point two. So one point three is to approve the ambulance rates? Do you want to take the hot seat, or not?
So, um, ambulance rates, it's that type of year again, we usually do them about now. And, um, basically, I just need to know what, uh, you folks want to do.
So you have to remind us what we've done in the past.
You can prove what they've said.
In the past, if we want to make sure our rate is at least, um...
It's coming back to me now.
A hundred and ten percent of the Medicare rate, which is on the low side, and we are over that target. If you want to change that target, we can obviously, you know, adjust the rates accordingly.
So how did that, how did that policy get set?
Back in the mist of ancient times, it was here before I got here. It was in the memos that I found when I arrived, so.
And what do other towns do?
Well, um, do you have the page from ComStar?
Yes.
I do.
They show you what the average of their top fifty. They have about two hundred municipal clients, and so the top fifty of them, that's the average of their rates.
Okay.
So it, even if we, for example, doubled our rates, we wouldn't be in the top fifty. Or we'd be at the bottom, you know, so.
What do they mean by bundled, average bundled?
So it used to be, four or five years ago, it was like a Chinese menu. You had, you know, oxygen, medication, everything was broken out, and there was a charge for every little thing.
Like the hustles.
So the, the way, the way ambulance billing has moved, and ComStar, our company that handles it for us, has moved us there, is that it's now an all-inclusive, all-in-one. The only difference is really, is that basic life support, which is what Dover's ambulance offers, or advanced life support with paramedics, that we either get, you know, from out of town or...
Okay.
So we're looking at the top twenty-five, right?
Top fifty.
Is the average the top fifty?
If it's two hundred, right, if it's two hundred companies, it'd be, it'd be the top twenty-five percent.
Yeah, the top quarter.
Not median. All right, so I, I, so I would be interested, not, not for this particular one, now, maybe these, my colleagues would like to be, I'm interested in looking for median that is charged, and in comparing the median to what we did. And trying to, and trying to understand what this is, what, what the rationale would be. What's the rationale? I mean, something steeped in the history, which many things seem to be, needs to be at least rethought.
So, from a mathematical standpoint? Because it's probably easier just to put it into an equation versus to sort of, to give Jerry a task to come back, right? If we're a hundred and ten percent historically of the Medicare amount, and we're, um, and we're thirty percent, right? Thirty-two percent, based upon these numbers, of the top twenty-five?
The top fifty.
The top fifty, okay, so.
Out of two hundred.
Out of two hundred. From a, if you, if you then drew what our average could be from where we are to where they are, and then what would, what do other towns, what would other towns do, right? Well, how many other towns would be in that range?
Median and mode, right?
Yeah. And, and you'd, you'd probably find out that, um, seventy-five percent of the towns are below that, between our rate and the average, and twenty-five percent are above, right? And that number is gonna be about eight hundred dollars, ballpark. Some, for the, for basic life support, and maybe two thousand, three hundred dollars for advanced life support, somewhere in that range.
So I'm looking for a rationale.
Right, so the rationale would be, why, where do we want to be? Where do we want to be?
And what are like communities?
And what's the probability of us actually receiving a bill, the dollar amount for that bill? That's the other side of the equa- uh, equation, correct?
Yeah.
We bill it, how much do we actually get paid?
Then that, that's gonna be, I can see if ComStar can give us some idea of what. Certainly, anybody that's on Medicare, you get the Medicare rate, and anything over that gets written off.
Right.
Um, on the other end, the people that didn't have insurance and haven't paid the bill, when it's six hundred dollars, aren't gonna pay the bill when it's twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred dollars, exactly.
You'll definitely be writing more off.
Yep, exactly.
Where in that middle, you know, you obviously, there are probably insurance companies that are willing to pay more than five hundred dollars. You know, how much more? Um, I can see if ComStar can give me any sort of deal for...
We, we, I, I don't think it's anybody's, um, request to, to try to establish numbers that are unrealistic to be billed and wouldn't matter because of the probability of being...
Rational, what is our rationale for doing this? That's what I'd like to understand.
So my guess, so I'm thinking that potentially it was that most ambulance calls, the individuals are on Medicare. That, that's my guess.
But that may have changed.
Right, because there's probably, because there's probably a, um, I, I bet if you looked at calls, I bet, you know, a...
This is way beyond...
Right, so that's, so that's what I'm, so that's what I'm thinking. So that's why, so that's why they pegged the, um, the Medicare rate and decided to just give a little bit of a premium over that.
Can we ask Jerry to do a little work in December twenty-eighth?
Yeah, 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 and, and so, my guess is, Jerry, that, that there's a lot of the, a lot of the trips, if they're basic life support trips, and if they're, if they're facility to facility type trips, which are probably none of our, our ambulance doesn't do facility to facility transfers. We're do- we're doing basic life support transfers. And, um, so that it's going to be a very narrow, uh, group of numbers that we have to pull from. And then our, our, I think our task is going to be, what's a reasonable amount to bill, and what's a reasonable expectation to be received from that bill, right?
Well, again, these other, you know, these other towns are charging more, apparently charging higher.
But we don't know what they're writing.
We don't know what they're getting, what they're writing off.
What they're writing, exactly. So you, you would, you'll find that if a company, if a company, if a, if a municipality like Cambridge or, um, some, that, that is doing a lot of higher-end type of, of transports, they may be writing off a significant amount of their...
Be good to know.
Okay, here's my guess, you'll see a full circle, six hundred bucks.
Do you, do you have it down?
I'm putting my money, I'm putting my money on six hundred dollars.
I already gave you that number.
Oh, you didn't.
Eight hundred is gonna be, you're just going, you're taking fifty percent of the median.
I am just telling...
Came up with six hundred dollars.
That's mine, that's my number.
Is that all right, Jerry?
Would you like to put a number out there?
This, this, I, I wonder, this is, this is televised, and I'm not sure we should be gambling.
Not gambling, it's just, it's just my back of the envelope. No, it's just my envelope, it's my back of the envelope calculation. It's not gambling.
This would be great.
All right, thank you, thank you, Jerry.
Jerry, thanks.
Seven hundred and twenty-two dollars.
Now, now we have the flip side of the coin, right?
Yep, now we have the flip side.
The write-offs.
The write-offs.
Five thousand, isn't it?
Yeah.
So this is the annual request for ambulance abatements. These are accounts that are, at this stage, uncollectible. Um, the smaller balanced ones are typically, insurance has made a payment, but there's a balance due from the patient. And they haven't paid, and a lot, many of these cases, we can't find them. They've, you know, they gave, they didn't give us an address, they gave a bad address. You know, it's, it's, it's not locals, but, and then the bigger ones were people that didn't give insurance and aren't, or either can't be reached by mail or aren't responding by mail. Um, and so forty, just over forty-nine hundred this year.
Right, so I'm gonna move to approve the abatements of nine bills covering the period July twenty-sixteen through July twenty-seventeen in the amount of four thousand nine hundred and one dollars and eighteen cents.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.
Thanks, Jerry.
And this is the total, Jerry, right? This is our total.
This is our total, this is after, you know, so like after insurance payments or any insurance adjustments, this is what was still outstanding. And again, past practice has been let them go two and a half years. And if nothing happens in two and a half years, write them off.
The second part of what we asked you earlier is, is really easy. All you'd have to do is just, just, just get the total number of rides, the total number of transfers that make up those numbers. And that will give you the, the average of what the, what each of our...
Six hundred bucks.
She's just so easy to deal with, once she's made up her mind, it's just...
It's the CFO coming out.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you very much.
The number to fourteenth is Valentine's Day. Are we out of time here?
No. So now, the next item of business is the discussion on the, um, on the statement of work for the website services?
So before you is, um, is a website contract with a new website vendor that we have discussed and reviewed over the past few months. The vendor is Civic Plus. They provide, I'd say about eighty-five percent of the Commonwealth's municipal websites, um, to the local municipalities. And we are ready to move forward with the contract so we can begin our engagement with them. A few brief things I'd just like to highlight. Until the board is, on page five of the Civic Plus proposal in your packet, um, lists, uh, has a robust list of the additional modules that come with the website. So it's not just a website where people can go and access documents and find information, hours of offices, and who's in, on particular committees of boards. Things like the alert center, where you can post emergency important information to the website and automatically push notifications out to residents. Um, a blog in a news section about upcoming events and things that are occurring, project-based, um, efforts that are happening in town. A more robust calendar, um, of all the events that are occurring in town that can be both official meetings like this one, as well as general events like Dover Days and the Dover Tree Lighting.
The month's up, an extra couple of days on that too, it's just in case you need more time.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and then the other thing which is really nice, and this is really thinking toward the future, while it's not included at this point, um, the vendor has a, or the platform, I should say, has a really robust e-payment center. So if you start to look toward bringing new systems into the community and modernizing the way we do business, we'll be able to allow residents to be able to pay a lot of their bills online so that they don't necessarily have to come into town hall if they don't want to, which is really great. Uh, the other thing that I wanted to highlight here that's important is that the platform allows for, um, permission-based access so that we no longer have to have, uh, one point of contact for everything related to the website, that we will actually, we can and we will push down, um, ownership of content to departments so that those departments are, will be updating it so that things are constantly being updated on a regular basis, a more frequent basis. Uh, and it helps with the sustainability of the site so that if, uh, you know, I'm the webs- I'm the individual updating the website, and I'm not here tomorrow, you don't have to go through a whole new education process.
So, so with that, like say, say for instance, the C O, C of A wants to remind people of a coffee they're having, can they post that themselves to the calendar?
Uh, we, they can, yep. We'd likely do it via staff.
Okay.
But all that can be worked out during implementation.
Right, okay.
Yeah. Um, and the other thing that I just wanted to highlight is, um, the platform has a robust document management, um, component to it. Uh, so that as we talk about access to information, um, and looking for forms like ambulance runs, all of these things can be uploaded and presented and stored on the website. And you can find them on their related pages, such as the treasurer collectors department in the case of ambulance, or in our fire department, as well as an actual document repository that's indexed based on hierarchy.
So similar to drive or not?
Uh, more robust.
More robust than drive.
Yep. And the, excuse me, the benefit to that is, you know, much of what we do here, day to day, is public information, it's information that the public wants. And so that if you put it on the website...
It's hard to find something.
Well, there it is for the external audience, as well as the internal audience as well. So everybody has, so those are the three things that I have to...
So Chris, I know you have some, you have some actual experience. So the thing about document management search, how is there a search?
It's great, it's very much like a, it's like a Google search. The search bar, keyword search, optimizes it that way.
Please find John. Can I hide myself? Okay. Please try to look for me if it is.
Are there any more questions, comments?
You ready to go?
I am.
Let's go.
All right. So I move to approve the statement of work for website services between Civic Plus and the town of Dover. I move to authorize the town administrator, Chris Dwelly, to execute any documents necessary in connection with Civic Plus.
Second.
This was the, we were waiting for this, we are very excited to get the website. I know it's, it's a while though, right?
Fingers and toes crossed, please.
So you'll like this, I think you'll like this next, as next agenda.
All right.
Is it gonna spend more money? Uh, no. It has technically already saved us money.
And with that, I'm gonna move the discussion.
I know that line too.
I am going to move the discussion over to Mr. Dwelly to talk to us about a website project manager.
Thank you, um, so that's exactly that. Um, it, uh, you know, as we look, as we look at all the things that we want to accomplish in town, it's clear, both given kind of our bandwidth, as well as our robust agenda, and the indication from the board, as well as the resources that we can provide via, uh, town meeting for the technology funds through that special article, um, you know, that we should be smartly engaging consultants to help us, um, really execute these projects and set them up so that they are sustainable moving forward. Uh, and so, in your packets is a proposal from a firm called Pig Ford, um, who has extensive experience in project managing website implementation projects, and specifically with Civic Plus. Um, so this individual I have not directly done work with, but she has done, I know her from, uh, her leading the project implementation recently in the towns of Thalmouth and Sandwich. Um, and she did some... she did some pro bono work for me and for the community based on her experience with Civic Plus in reviewing the initial proposal and identified areas with the vendor that we could shave and cut costs. So she was actually able to reduce the initial scope of work for the same exact services by twenty thousand dollars for us.
For us.
For us, which is fantastic. But beyond the money piece, website implementations, it's a, it's a heavy lift. It truly is a big, big effort.
And nobody has the time to dedicate. Anyone, you or Kate, could probably do it, but you need, it needs to become your full-time job. Right.
Apparently, they have full-time jobs.
I know. It's just so time-consuming. Well, Mona can do it. She does everything.
Mona only said, no, I think Mona has a full-time job.
No, but she just picks things up.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, Chris saying it's a heavy lift. It's a heavy lift.
It's a huge little lift.
Is it an hourly? Do we, would we be contracting on an hourly or would it be a project basis?
What's really nice is they've voted us on page, I believe it's three, of the proposal here, a total flat cost dollar amount for the entire project implementation. They have also committed to, Civic Plus has provided us with an aggressive schedule with an implementation target date of two months.
Wow.
And if we're gonna need that two months, we're gonna need this project manager.
And they, in the contract, they also provide a lot of support, engage the company.
They do. They do.
So it is a heavy lift.
That's the nice benefit. And so, you know, what's really great is Civic Plus and the Engage project, as we, you know, initially roll that out and implement that, they'll come on site and they'll provide some initial trainings. But the additional benefit of a project manager is that they'll really put together kind of that tailored training experience and be here after the website has gone out and has gone and packed up to be able to provide that continuous follow-up for folks. And also customize the experience that we want, like I talked about, about decentralizing, updating the website.
And it's important that, as you push it down, that people are comfortable with their role in keeping the website up to date.
We understand. I mean, we've spent a fair amount of time on TAB. And it's one of the things is implementation, support, training of staff. It's a big, that's another big lift that we have to, we have to be prepared to do well.
How do we pay her?
Through the special article as it relates to technology.
Okay. We still have plenty of...
It's not dover's.
I meant actual, how come she gets to make jokes and we can't?
She's the chair.
Good answer. Good answer. So we...
What do you mean, like literally?
Nope.
We give her an envelope with money in the back of the, in the back of the townhouse.
I'm actually, I'm actually okay with all those methods. Do we have to appropriate any additional money?
The town was kind enough, John.
We do not.
To do that. Correct. So we can let our constituents at home know that there's no further appropriation necessary.
Right. But that wasn't the question you asked. You asked, are we paying her?
So when she wants to be little, it's little.
Just putting it out there.
I am gonna make a motion.
All right. Can you handle it?
Move to approve the Cape Forward proposal for the IT project management service. A move to authorize town administrator Christopher Dwelly to execute any documents necessary in connection with Cape Forward.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Go ahead, say it quick.
Looking forward to it. This is gonna be a really great...
This should be exciting. This should be exciting. Yep.
That's great.
It's a big step.
Well done to everybody.
Hey, getting closer.
Ms. O'Brien, would you like to talk to us about the town report?
So this is the draft town report for the board's office. I've incorporated them, but I have two minor other changes I have to add. It's all just a primer.
And I have, I have a few nits or symbols to you, but I thought it was, it was really good. It's amazing how much we've done.
Maybe like a whole day going through them.
Right, right. There was nothing... No, I was just, you know, I was just surprised.
It was like I was here the whole year.
Right. Get, get, you know, see what we were doing.
Kate, if only you had been here.
You would have ran away.
No. Mona, Mona has, Mona has a way.
So go through your nits.
I will send them.
Oh, you're gonna send them? Okay. All right.
Because I was actually, I was reading it on the train. It's also...
And when I get those all, I'll forward it to the...
Right.
So can we make a motion?
And you can take, you don't have to take all my nits because some of it is just...
Definitely do not have to take all of them.
You know, I get really mad sometimes at people changing the...
I never do. I never get mad.
They are both lying. They are both, they're both lying.
So you can, so you can just, if you think it sounds better, use it. If it doesn't, I'm okay with it.
So would you like a move subject to...
You're gonna do this again?
I'm just trying to help.
Get into a roll.
I'm trying to help. Subject to edits?
Well, no, because they're, it's nothing substantive. It's little nits here and there. So, yeah.
Move to approve the 2019 selectmen's town report.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you, Kate.
Well done, Kate. She whole grudges if you edit her work.
No, it's not John, John.
We don't call her the grumpy editor for nothing.
Surplus items. I have two of them next to me. How do I dispose of them?
You can put them on the...
Thank you, Mona. That was good.
Well, Valentine's Day's coming.
I know.
Remember, Mona. Remember?
The Parks and Rec Department, specifically the director...
Has a lot of stuff. Surplus stuff.
Fifteen broken chairs that no one can dispose of.
I'm glad you kept them all this time.
So the board needs to declare them a surplus so that we can trash them.
I can, I can vouch that the newer, the new chairs are nice. And the old chairs were really tough.
I, I, it just blows my mind that you have to get our approval for some of these tickets. But I move to deem the fifteen chairs identified in Mr. Galone's memorandum as surplus items.
Second.
All in favor?
I think Ford actually wanted to take one home. I'm not sure.
We sat in those broken chairs two years ago and it was a hundred and fifty degrees.
They haven't improved with age.
For three hours on a Sunday before town meeting. That was just awful.
Yes, okay.
So the next out item is just housekeeping, right?
It's just housekeeping. Yep. Now that we have Kate on board, she and Mona have been going through the appointment list to look for opportunities for consolidation, as well as committees that have both vacancies as well as expired appointments, one being our town council.
All right. So then I move to appoint Anderson Creer as Dover's town council for a term expiring June 30th, 2020.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Okay. On time, Mona.
Right. So it's just selectmen's updates. I really do not have a very, an update on the rail trail. Chris and I are gonna have a meeting with town, town council. And then next meeting on the 28th, we'll have something to report.
Okay. But I mean, it's, the friends are still...
I, I mean, we're all trying. It's not, it's not easy. And so we're trying to find, you know, they're, they're working on it, we're working on it. And we may or may not find a path forward.
Okay.
Are there, are there any other initiatives that anybody wants to talk about?
Well, TAB meets tomorrow. I mean, next week. We covered most of what TAB has accomplished by signing off on those projects.
Right, so that's, so that's huge.
And we're, you know, I, in terms of the Carroll building project, you know, going down the, assuming we'll soon go into, from the RFQ into the select potential candidates phase. And that's scheduled to take place in February. And I thought that, if I remember right, you have to help me out here. I think that we were looking for early March to try to get that resolved.
Yeah, that sounds right.
Just two items from me, Madam Chair. One, obviously, we discuss hail. We'll be here next, at our next meeting. Number two was, did we have, was there an actual accepted, an accepted offer on a property on Farm Street that held a conservation restriction where we had a right of first refusal? We would have, there was a, there was some talk, not at our last meeting, but the meeting before that. That came up as a subject item. We're in open space.
So there is a potential 61A chapter, excuse me, property that may be going on the market, but we have not received the official documentation from the seller's attorney indicating as such. So it's still, it's still open at this point.
Got it.
But of course, the board of selectmen will be notified the day of when we receive it, if we receive it.
Small town of Dover, things travel faster than the internet sometimes.
The only thing that I would, as a future meeting, I would really like to talk about the sustainability council idea. If we can set aside some, set aside some time. And it'd be good to have some of the people who have been major players in the, either on the transport station or on the solar panel stuff to sort of consider this. Because as a, as a sort of, as I've been discussing with various and sundry people, it sort of seems to make sense to many to have something that looks like the open space committee, which is a committee formed by other members of other interested committees, as a way of providing a locus and a focus for broader issues than just solar.
You know, as I've mentioned before, I'm not sure what we get that we're not getting now. So we should have a discussion.
One, just one other reminder, subject to the solar, you reminded me of that, Bob, is that Monday, the 10th, there is an open hearing for the cell tower. There's gonna be a planning board, I'm sorry, a planning board hearing for some tower. Potential change in their rate structure. That's a planning board item. So I got, just got a notification of that today.
So I would like to...
Monday coming, sorry?
I'm sorry?
It's coming Monday.
It's coming Monday. At, at, in planning board downstairs.
Okay. And then what do they meet, 10?
No, they meet at seven P.M.
Oh, I have to be a...
The one, I'd like to commend everybody for finally getting the water main fixed in front of us, or the hydrant. That was a little bit of an ordeal. I think everything that could go wrong went wrong. And, but I saw them on Friday night fixing it. So, you know, everybody, you know, worked, worked late. And now it's even forgotten.
Yeah. Thank you. They did a great job.
Yeah, they did do a good job.
Water main issue and two light posts in the same block. Right?
They did some damage.
They did some damage.
And was one driver or was it an accident? Wow, okay.
Wow. Wow. Well, well done. Craig and Chief, everybody involved.
And Carl and Chris.
Carl and Chris.
There's a lot of people involved.
And Charles, or the school, and, you know, it was a community event.
It was a minute.
There was, and it was cold. And there were so many people standing outside, right? Or Friday night, right?
They touched a lot of bases.
Right. Well, it's, it's just one of those things where you could never have expected so much to go wrong. And just everything.
No, you're right. Mercy's law.
Right.
Okay.
That's all on our plate.
Yep. Now we go to the people who actually do work.
Right. Not those that pretend to do the work.
So on the town administrator updates, maybe I'll start with the water piece. And thank you for the recognition of Craig and Carl and the crew who did a great job and spent a lot of...
Quality time together.
Time together, tearing up, tearing up the road. You know, one of the things that didn't necessarily remind us, but brought back to the top of the list, was that, you know, the town has essentially a liability under the streets here in town center in that we own the water infrastructure, but we do not provide the service of the water. So Colonial Water is using our infrastructure to distribute water. They pay us a fee and they shave off the rates for us. But there's no money that's set aside for water main repairs.
When was the last time they were looking at it?
For regular maintenance schedules. And so, again, it's a big liability. So I have, I've had a conversation with the chair of the water resources committee to tee that up to the group to see if they had a, just a general recommendation kind of as it relates to water resources more generally in the town, you know, kind of what their thoughts are about water resources and any recommendations in that area. But as, as the, as the, as the board of selectmen holds the contract with Colonial Water to use that infrastructure and that contract is up for renewal at the end of this fiscal year, you know, these things kind of go hand in hand if you want to revisit what that looks like, either in terms of, you know, compensation and things like that. But it's just, that's all to say that it's something that we should be looking at. And we'll start to look at the dialogue with the board over the next few months.
Oh, yeah. No, take it that, I mean, just making us aware.
And can we, you know, is there a company we can hire that could go in and look at the infrastructure and give us a sense of what may be coming down the pike, you know, similar to what we're doing with all the other buildings? It would be good to know.
So that's a great point. There are, you know, essentially one of the charges to the water resources committees, you know, we have some, Weston and Sampson's out there, but, you know, who has the town that have worked in the past or that you know of, that might be a good, you know, there are a lot of good professionals on that crew that might have a good sense to help with that.
So is this on their agenda for next Wednesday?
It is.
So Weston and Sampson actually does quite a bit of work for the region because they have a wastewater treatment plant. And prior to bringing Weston and Sampson in, we could never meet the permit requirements. So they do have a good relationship and, you know, it runs more smoothly. It's less expensive. Preventative maintenance is being done.
This is like a pipeline company, isn't it? We're like a pipeline company. We have the pipes and then we're putting...
Somebody else's product.
Use it.
Maybe we can run copper cable through the water pipes and stuff. Just a thought.
Few other quick updates for the board. Selectmen Springett referenced a few things with the TAB. A couple of things I just wanted to highlight for the board, the folks here this evening. Some of the immediate things that both the TAB and then staff have been looking at are some connectivity issues as it relates to broadband, essentially hardwired network, as well as Wi-Fi in both the Carroll Community Center and the townhouse. So our IT staff has been working with, with a member of the TAB who's got extensive experience in hands-on networking and network troubleshooting. And they've kind of been assessing both the, the two buildings that I just mentioned to come up with a plan on addressing those. And I had a preliminary checking with them today. It looks like there are some lightweight solutions that we can employ to help, you know, make sure that people can get Wi-Fi in the building when they're in the building, as well as ensure that people have their public speeds on their computers. So it's just, I'm working on what I wanted to highlight.
Like the repeater technology has gotten a lot better.
That's right.
I mean, because I, I don't know when it came to be, but it really, it really helps. Because we have a couple of boosters in our house.
Yeah, we do too.
Because we, we had rooms where you couldn't really get Wi-Fi.
Yep.
And at work, we, we have a number of them because... And, and at work, we, we have a number of them, because we just found the volume, people prefer to be on Wi-Fi, they hard, hard connect.
And it looks like they've stabilized the website again.
The website looks to be stabilized, I checked an hour coming in here, so I can say that, so, but again, you know, knock on wood on that thing until, until we retire it. The other piece...
We could have a ceremony.
It's not a bad idea, we should put that on, sometime...
We can cut you away around this.
As it relates to, you know, all things sustainability from an IT standpoint, on, at the next board meeting, there'll be a request for the board to authorize the town to request a .gov domain address for our website and for our emails, so things will move from doverma.org to doverma.gov. There are some security concerns related to .orgs, .govs are just generally more professional and dedicated to government organizations. And the third piece is, there has been some, some changes in the federal government and ownership related to .org owners, which could increase significantly the cost of owning those domains moving forward, so, given that we're moving forward with the website at this point, it made sense to go and start, to start that request to transfer things over.
Oh, that's a good idea, okay.
The .org would still exist in the background, so it would redirect if people had still had it, but it'll help us get to the .gov, excuse me. And then the third piece, I just wanted to build on Selectment Springen's mention about training, our IT coordinator has shared with me today a really robust G-Suite training for staff here in town, and so, it's all focused about around emails, calendar usage, as well as document sharing on the drive.
Well, that's great, right.
So, she's coordinating, and I want to thank the, the library trustees and the library director, we're gonna get about fifteen laptops in the great hall and have kind of concurrent sessions.
Oh, that's great.
Where staff come in and out, and she's also put together really robust documentation, so that you can get your hands-on training in the class, and you've got a nice training document, both physical and electronically, that you can reference if you run into trouble or have a question later on down the road, which will help, which will be a great thing for staff, something that they need, as well as help reduce the number of requests that our sole IT staff gets as it relates to things like this, which is good.
That's, I mean, you know, that was another one of the initiatives, training, give, give, give people the tools they need to get their job done.
The tools and the support.
Right, and you can always learn something new, I mean, even if you know how to do something, when you go to these classes, sometimes you learn the right way how to do it.
Or it's a shortcut that takes you a whole lot less time than the way you were doing it.
Right.
But it's often, you know, I've been dealing with technology for most of my career, and it's, if you don't get the training, sustained training and support right, all the other stuff, right, it's just wasted. So, just the other thing I was thinking about, that, that we, you know, we have a lot on our plate, and, and so, not just us, but I mean, the town in general, as we go into 20 fiscal year, 2021, they always worry about having enough money in the, in the budget to, to basically bring on board, like we have this, this, this firm today for the, for the, for the website and implementation, ways to, to make sure we have enough money to handle transitional peaks in staffing needs. I mean, one of the reasons why we went to the town meeting last May and asked for the, for the technology budget was so that we could handle, we have the money to do this kind of stuff, and I know there are other areas that are equally impacted, not necessarily areas that work directly to, to the board, we're also struggling with sort of people who work, I just wonder if there's any, if there's ways that we can handle that.
So, would that conversation be part of the budget review, when you send that, when we do it on the 28th?
Yeah, it could be, yeah, it could be part of the budget review.
Just a couple, because sitting on Warren, I've heard...
Right.
You know, one thing that comes to mind is, you know, as it relates to the technology article, you know, you set up something like that for other efforts, and, you know, you fund it with free cash, which is a one-time fund that is available, it doesn't hit, it doesn't hit the taxpayer, right, it's things, that's really what it's for, right, a one-time funding source for a one-time effort, you know, one of the things that potentially we could discuss now at the budget meeting is, you know, we've been doing, as Selectment Springen indicated, you know, so much work here, kind of building out this foundation and level-setting things, specifically as it relates to some of our, you know, evaluations certainly in IT, but how the town is organized and structured, and so, what we could do is we could set aside, you know, an article for, like, organizational assessments, right, to allow us to kind of continue to build, and so, we haven't formally talked about, you know, our efforts on developing a DPW department, but they're underway, and it's kind of a preliminary phase, but, you know, that's just an initial phase, right, and there's a more mature phase, and I think having those, those funds available to maybe just contract with someone to help, what does a robust Department of Public Works look like in this community to help us get that worked on, could be a good thing.
Right, well, I think, I think we're really seeing advantage, you know, by bringing that consultant in from the Collins Center to work with us on the financial policies, even though I, I did challenge him a little bit, but I think he stood up to my challenge, but it was a really, you know, it was a really good meeting, you know, and it's, it's nice to get, right, it's nice to get actual benchmarks, you know, other towns get, it's not anecdotal anymore, it's this what other towns are doing, so it's ni, it was nice to have the funds to, to do that, because it makes the task much easier, more efficient, and then you can focus on, you know, having those policies in place and implementing them, which will then save you money in the long run.
And it complements some of the work that Chris has been doing, in looking at how to restructure the, how we've been siloed, and better use of the staff that we have, so these things are all, they will lock together here as we go forward.
So, the only other real quick things, Selectment Jeffrey's talked about Hale, Selectment Springen talked about Carroll, the OPAM RFQ closes on Wednesday, we had seven firms, we had a site visit as part of the application process, wasn't mandatory, it was optional, but we had seven firms come and actually visited the site.
That's a good turn, yeah.
So, Ford, the Chair of the, you know, the committee, and myself.
Not yet.
Yeah.
The self-appointed Chair.
The dedicated committee member, and I had a nice site visit with those firms, truly, really.
The passionate.
Oh, yeah, that, yes, incredibly, incredibly.
We wrapped up initial round of interviews for the municipal project manager with a panel of staff this week, and we'll be moving on, reaching out to members of TAB and some of the other community members.
Come here.
Come here.
Your gloves.
To continue the, the assessment process.
Good.
So, I, you know, I'm looking possibly, I should say, it looks very, it looks very good.
Excellent.
It looks very good, and all goes well, I imagine we have someone here mid-March as possible.
St. Patty's Day. If that's the date, they have to bring beer.
There we go.
No, green donuts.
That's a...
No donuts.
Kate, add that to the list of questions for the next round.
Do you like green donuts?
I think that's it for the points this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, so now we will move to the consent agenda, and we will vote to accept and expend a gift to the Council on Aging for Rehab Associates. We will approve special licenses for February 22nd and March 15th, notice there isn't one for February 14th. Approve open session meeting minutes for November 6th, 21st, December 4th, 19th, and January 9th.
Well, that catches us up.
Right.
No, no, it's on the 29th.
Yeah, one more, only one, no, yeah.
Yeah, exactly, so, it's okay.
Yeah, all right, that's pretty good.
Yeah.
So, do I have a motion to approve all the items on the consent agenda?
So moved.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Madam Chair, a, a, just a, a thank you and a shout-out to the, to, to family from Rehab Associates for their gift to the Council on Aging.
Thank you, that's a good, thank you, Mr. Jeffries.
Gil and Jerry and family have been very supportive for a long time of our Council on Aging, Gil, both Gil and Jerry put a lot of time in, and a special thank you to them for their generosity.
Yep, thank you for the reminder, so without, there are no other items on the agenda or comments, I move to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, and have a good night.